Folks, I'd like to have your attention. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting for August 28th. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission. We've got a little bit, some, I guess, housekeeping that we wanted to do and a little recognition here before we get started this morning. Before we do that, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started with our agenda this morning, we're honored to have the county judge with us this morning, and I think he has a presentation he would like to make. We have got, one of our longest-serving members of the Planning Commission is retiring, as of today, and so Judge wanted to come by and do a little recognition here. So Ms. Dina Crosby, would you come forward, please, also?
Well, good morning, everyone. Happy to be here today and see all the smiling faces at the Planning Commission. It's a day that happens to all of us at one time or another in whatever endeavor that we may participate in, or multiple endeavors, that we reach a time of retirement. And it's a day with a certain amount of sweetness and a certain amount of sadness. And today, we have Dina Crosby, who is retiring from the Planning Commission. I say sweetness because, looking back, Dina has done a tremendous job over a long period of time. By a long period of time, I mean 28 years and six months. I guess we could calculate how many meetings that's been if we got our pencil out, but it's a lot of meetings and, obviously, a lot of years. And so, when we look back on the decisions that you've helped make, we have to think of our county as a whole. We have a beautiful county, and much of it is because of the work of the Planning Commission and the work that you participated in and had a part in deciding and determining the direction of the county. Even though you've been here 28 years and six months, you are not the longest-serving member of the Planning Commission. It's hard to believe you are actually the second-longest-serving member we've ever had. Ernest Harris served 29 years and one month, so I don't think you're going to catch him.
No, I don't think so either.
If you'd hung in there a little bit longer, you would've. Nevertheless, it's a wonderful record, and we thank you so much. And, as I say, the sweetness of it is all the wonderful things you've helped do over the years. The sadness, of course, is that we won't see you here as often. You're still going to be in the community; you're not going anywhere. Dina's also the Chairman of our Health Department, so we see each other there on a regular basis, and others will see you as well. So I have this proclamation here I'd like to read now, and that is, "To all whom these letters shall come, greetings. Know ye that Oldham County Fiscal Court hereby honors and recognizes Dina Crosby from September 1990 until August 2018 as a member of our Planning Commission. Whereas the Planning Commission, Dina Crosby, has consistently and continually performed her duties on the Oldham County Planning Commission in an efficient, effective, and professional manner, and whereas Commissioner Crosby has also served on the Study Review Committee and ensured sound land use policy decisions benefiting the future quality of life in Oldham County and its citizens, and whereas Commissioner Dina Crosby deserves the recognition and appreciation of all citizens of Oldham County. Now therefore, I, David Vogel, Oldham County Judge Executive, do hereby proclaim August 28th, 2018, as Dina Crosby Day in Oldham County, and thank her for her 28 years and six months of service to our community on this commission." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dean is being replaced by Iva Davis. And, Iva, I don't think you'll make it 28 years and six months. I know you'll... I don't mean, I just mean on the plan. I don't think I'm going to make it 28 years and six months anywhere, you know? We welcome you today as well, and thank you for your participation. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thanks to the commission. Thanks for having me here all those years. I won't miss carrying those stacks of paper in here anymore, but I've enjoyed myself. I've learned a lot about the county. My wheels don't have to roll around anymore trying to figure out where this is or what that is anymore. I can kind of rest easy. I will be always in Oldham County. My kids are here, and I like Oldham County. This is where I was planted when we moved here back in 1974, and I've remained in Oldham County. I don't know anything about Louisville, okay? I won't be going there. Thanks a lot, and continue your good service. I've seen a lot of changes, and for the good of this county, and we have really, I think, when I first came on, the population was probably in the 20s or 30s, and now we are over, I think, like 60-something.
Almost 70-something.
So, we have grown a lot, and thank everybody. Continue your good work.
Thank you.
Judge Vogel, thank you very much for that recognition, and Dina certainly deserves it. And if you have a moment, if y'all could get a picture, maybe, I get somebody to take the picture, that would be, okay? That would be perfect.
Okay. While they're doing that, I just want to officially welcome Iva Davis to the Planning
Commission. She's appointed, I guess, last Tuesday by the recommendation from the county, from Judge Vogel, and the magistrate's voted on your appointment, so look forward to working with you, and welcome aboard.
I've been here for 50 years. I wasn't born here, but I feel like I've been here.
Great, thank you.
See how we did here. Probably stood in front of someone, so...
Perfect. Thank you all very much. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Before we do, I'd like to remind everyone, if you have a cellphone with you, to be, to turn it off or turn it on vibrate, so it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the room. Well, before we get into our agenda, let's look at our minutes, our approval of minutes from the July 24th meeting. I think you have a copy of those, and if we could, I'd like to get a motion to approve those, and then we can go through and make any additions or corrections to the minutes. Could I get a motion? Okay? Mr. Faalvi? Okay, Mr. Faalvi? And Sam, seconds? Okay, any discussion or any additions or corrections to the minutes as mailed? Any additions or corrections? Okay? Seeing none, we'll just do a voice vote on the approval of the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes from our July 24th meeting signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, the minutes have been approved. All right, Ms. Nun, if you would, let's read our first docketed item, please.
Okay, docket PZ-18-021. Application has been filed by Kevin Heike for a waiver of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area on Lot 7, Reserve Cove, 14210, Reserve Cove Prospect. The property is owned as R2 Residential.
Okay, and before we get started, Ms. Alvey, let's get everyone sworn in, staff.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Alvey, I understand you'll be presenting the docket?
Yes. Good morning, Amy Alvey. I'm Assistant Director with Oldham County Planning Development Services. As Ms. Nun just stated, this is an application for a waiver of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area located on Lot 7 of Reserve Cove. The property is R2 Residential, and the land size is 1.46 acres. This is an aerial view from our GIS that shows the outlined in red, the applicant's This is just a zoomed-in version. You'll see the shaded area there that is the location of the 100-year floodplain. Site history: On December 14th, 2004, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved an application by Rose Island Partners LLC for a preliminary plan for a development consisting of 12 single-family residences on approximately 17 acres. The total site was 59.56 acres. The balance of the land, which was 42.56 acres, is to be used as a wildlife refuge. The property was located at the 1900 block of Rose Island Road and was to be known as the Reserve on Rose Island. Then, just recently, May 22nd, 2018, the Oldham County Planning Commission denied an application by Kevin Heike for a waiver of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area on Lot 7, Reserve on Rose Island. As I just previously stated, a previous application was denied due to the lack of expert testimony regarding the implications of filling the area and its effects on flooding. The applicant will provide an expert at the public hearing today to address questions and concerns from the commission members and the public. So what they are requesting is a waiver of the 40-foot No Disturb Area along the rear of Lot 7 of the Reserve of Rose Island to allow the construction of a raised lawn to remain. The 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area was placed at the rear of the lots to add additional buffer between the sloped area going up to the house lots and the wetlands according to the Planning Commission minutes from 2004. So this is the recorded record plat for the Reserve on Rose Island that was recorded October of 2005. You'll see highlighted there in red is the subject lot. We'll zoom in here. There is a 15-foot sewer easement that runs along the rear of the property as well. This area here is the 40-foot Do Not Disturb. The area highlighted in yellow is the existing drainage easement, and then the blue area is the location, approximate location, of the 100-year floodplain. So just to give you the surroundings, this is the south adjoining property. This is the drainage area between the home that I just showed you and the applicant's lot. This is the drainage area here. This is in between Lots 8 and 7. This is the north adjoining property. This is the east adjoining property, which is across the street. This is the applicant's lot. This is standing at the center of the lot, looking out towards the river. Natural stone and fill was brought into the Do Not Disturb Area, which is also located in the 100-year floodplain to repair damage caused by drainage issues and to create the raised lawn area. This is standing at the center of the applicant's lot, looking to the north, so this is looking at the house on Lot 6. This is in the same location, looking south, so this is Lot 8. The applicant's justification statement states the raised lawn was constructed in order to manage the drainage issue and create an opportunity to improve water quality while allowing the homeowner to have back what was once usable space. So this is the site plan that was submitted with the application. The area highlighted here, that is the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area, and again, the light blue area is the location of the 100-year floodplain. So again, this is the drainage area in between Lots 8 and 7. This is the drainage area, and then it shows the construction of the rock wall. This is a view from the drainage area, looking back up into the lot here, just to show you the slope of the lot. The applicant's justification statement also states the strict application of the regulation would prevent the homeowner from utilizing the full potential of their property. This was the original rendering that was presented back in May that shows what the anticipated raised lawn drawing would, the finished product, would be. So that is the area that is highlighted in yellow. And then this is the raised lawn, looking from the rear of the lot towards the front that shows the raised lawn areas. So this is just another view of the existing rocks that are in place, or stones in place. This is a view just from the adjoining lot, looking into the applicant's site, again, showing the slope and the existing rocks. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area on Lot 7 of Reserve of Rose Island, and that is all that I have.
All righty, Ms. Alvey, thank you. Mr. Shade, Staff Engineer for Oldham County, do you have any comments or anything you need to add? Okay. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for our staff at this time? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Mine's for Mr. Shade. Did you have a chance to review the applicant engineer's work on this before the meeting?
Well, did he just come up? Just name an address for the record, please.
Derek Shade, Staff Engineer, 5306 Foxwood Drive, Crestwood, Kentucky.
Mr. Douglas?
To repeat my question, did you have a chance to review the engineers' and the applicant's response to the justification?
Yes, the county engineer and I both reviewed the package for the specific request.
Do you have any response to that, to the Commissioners?
We did not have any disagreements with the opinions provided. I believe one of the opinions was that it would be a negligible amount of the floodplain being raised. We would agree with that, given the amount of space that they want to fill within the Trying, I'm just looking at my notes here. We didn't have any other disagreements with their findings, unless you have a specific question regarding their assessment that I can address. I mean, that's the only one that comes out in my mind.
I was just giving you the opportunity, in case, you know, the testimony is given by the engineer's office, or engineer for their applicant's site, just to make sure that you had ample time, or your all staff had ample time to review it, so...
Yes, we reviewed it.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, sir, Ms. Boney.
Are there any regulations concerning the construction of structures within a sewer I'm not sure who that question would be for.
There are, but I think the Sewer District, Oldham County Environmental Authority, has said that there is not a sewer line in there, and that if, in fact, they ever put one in, they would remove all the material at the owner's expense, but you can ask the applicant that.
Right, and that's standard for anyone developing in Oldham County, if they want to put a retaining wall or something like that in an easement. We've seen that on multiple projects where they have the owner sign something that basically says, "If we ever have to get in there and do work and remove your structure, it's going to be at your expense to remove it and put it back," so it's standard.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, Mr. Horton?
Thank you. Following the first question there, the, he was asking if the engineers had time to look at this, has the office staff as a whole had an opportunity to review this?
Yes.
Okay, is there any comments you need to make at this point?
Well, I think that what you had asked was for, the reason it was denied, was for them to have expert testimony, and you've not heard that yet. So, nothing has changed since the May meeting regarding staff's opinion of...
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, yes, sir, Ms. Faalvi.
Amy, does that 40-foot easement extend to either lot on both sides of this property?
It runs along the whole rear of the development.
And how does, it still remains an easement, I guess, but...
It's not an easement, it's a 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area.
How does that affect, if we vote today to do away with that, how does it affect the other two pieces of property?
Is your mic on, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Well, I mean, you would, obviously, you take each case on its own, so you wouldn't necessarily be setting a precedent, but however, the intent of it was to, an area for it not to be disturbed, to create a natural buffer between the residential use and the wildlife preserve. So, obviously, allowing them to construct, and it would change the character of that lot.
That might be a question for the applicant, too.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for staff? I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas?
I was going to ask this to applicant, but I'll just ask Amy. Apparently, is it on the deed restriction, the 40-foot Do Not Disturb is on there?
I'm not sure if there are deed restrictions outlined that. We do not enforce deed restrictions, but it is on the recorded record plat of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb Area.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Ms. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams?
Ms. Amy?
Yes, sir.
Would you go back and show us the photographs that we have of that 40-foot non-disturbed area?
This is a portion of it here, because this is the rear of the raised lawn.
Okay, so that's at the, the 40-foot non-disturbed is on this side of that wall? Or the other side of that wall?
This side.
Okay.
The way that the plan is drawn, let me find another one. So this is the, this is the area of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb. So this area here is not in the 40-foot, so that portion of the raised lawn is not.
Okay.
And this, there is a portion that is here, here, and here.
So that little wall that we looked at in the last photograph, where would that be?
Where would that be?
Yes, ma'am. On, yes, ma'am. So it's back into the non-disturbed area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That gives you an idea there.
The property on the other side of the wall, looking at this picture, is that...
This area?
Yes, this property, yeah. Is that owned by the applicant, or...
No, it is not. It's part of the wildlife refuge.
Okay. All right, so, okay, I got it. Thanks.
Okay, any additional questions? Mr. Douglas?
And this might be from Mr. Urban, or Mr. Shade, or Amy, either one. Obviously, I guess the applicant has already got authorization or has worked with the 100-year, I guess this is the floodplain area?
It is the floodplain area, yes.
So have they already got permission from the state, or did they provide you permission with the state for that?
Well, let me just give a quick backup from that. We, I think it was last September, put a stop-work order on the property because there was over an acre of land disturbance without permit or soil erosion control measures. Since then, they have applied to Division of Water and have Division Waters' approval for the plan, which includes building the house in the 100-year floodplain. The next step is to come and get a local permit. Well, I couldn't issue that permit when I saw the No Disturb Area, so that's kind of where we're stopped. If you all approve the No Disturb Area being waived, then they would file a local permit, and then they could get a, you know, their plans approved and get a building permit. So Division of Water always reviews these, and they always come back saying, "Okay, yep, it's approved based on the plan."
So, does their plan meet the standards of building in a flood zone? I mean, I mean, because I think what, the county's kind of tried to avoid having homes built in, or areas of the, part of the flood zone?
Well, the livable space has to be two feet above the base, 100, or base flood elevation of 100 years. So if you look down on Riverside Drive, we're actually working through FEMA to elevate some of those houses. They're still there, but now they're 14 feet up in the air before you get livable space, so you can build in the 100-year floodplain. You just have to meet the standards. Right.
All right, Mr. Finney? This is questions for staff, so...
Yes, I'll go back to, back to Mr. Urban. If this is not approved, would this prevent the, it wouldn't, not approving it would not prevent the building of the house in the future, would it?
That's correct. All they would be required to do is remove the material from the 40-foot No Disturb Zone.
But their, but their building project could go on?
It could, after getting, still have to get a local stream construction permit and still have to get a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McWilliams, did I see your hand, sir?
Yes, did. And Amy, you may want to defer to somebody else on this question, but I know one of the things that the applicant had stated, that the raised lawn was constructed in order to manage, manage drainage issues. Are you aware of any adjacent properties in this same No Disturb Zone that has any drainage issues?
I'm not aware of that, but you may ask Jim, he's more familiar with the project, or the applicant, or if there's anyone in the audience that isn't an adjoining property owner that had...
That would probably be an applicant. After, after they present, then we can, if there's anyone here, you know, can provide that information.
You still have that question after the applicant's...
I hate it when they know what I'm going to ask. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Boney?
And I may have asked this the first time we went over this case, and you can educate me on this, but it's my understanding that there are setbacks from the rear of a property line for construction of any structure. So is that not an issue?
It's not. There's plenty of room. They do not violate any setback requirements from our regulations.
So what is a setback requirement for this zoning?
I think it's 25 feet rear yard.
No, it's, well, that is for the primary structure.
So it does not apply?
For walls and accessories would be five feet.
Are they five feet off of the rear property line?
I've not had a surveyed site plan that shows that on there.
Well, it looks like, from what they provided us, they're right on the property line. If you're talking about the stone, where the, where the stone was placed...
Correct. I'm trying not to testify, because I know what I went through building a structure on my property, and I had to apply, you know, with the setbacks, so I'm a little confused as to why this structure is right on that property line, or appears to be...
That might be a question for the applicant, to let them provide that detail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Okay, we'll move into the next portion, which is the presentation by the applicant and our representatives and others in support of the application. And Mr. Baxter, I would assume that is you?
That is me. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street, here in La Grange. In the interest of trying not to replow all of this, because most of you all, except for you, sir, and obviously not you, ma'am, I think most of you all were here in May. I have asked our experts to come up and testify, but I've asked them to try to streamline this a little bit, because I think the issue is the same issue that you all already heard. The question that was raised by Mr. King in his motion, and I will read from the notes, "Previous application was denied due to a lack of expert testimony regarding implications of filling the area and its effect on flooding. The applicant will provide an expert at the public hearing to address questions and concerns from commission members and the public." That is, in the staff report, I think the term used by Mr. King was a subject matter expert, if I recall correctly, in the motion that he made. They will address... They will address the issue, Ms. Bonet, that you had as it relates to OSEA. They have an email from Kevin Gibson with Veolia about that easement, so they will be able to address that for you. And we have a gentleman here today who can testify, Mr. Woosley, who can testify regarding the effect of the fill in the floodplain, and whether or not there is an effect on the surrounding properties, which was the big question, I think, raised. The one thing I would remind you all, and sometimes, you know, you think that you're gonna give a bunch of information, and that that's gonna help. Well, in reality, I think in this case, the fact that they have given you the footprint of what they plan to construct, and the fact that that shows up in the floodplain, has actually confused the issue. Because the issue here really has nothing to do with the building that they are constructing, the house that they want to construct, or the amenities behind it. None of those things are within this 40-foot no-disturb zone, which is the issue today. So, we provide all this information, and I think it tends to add a little bit to the confusion of what we're here about. And so, I just wanted to clarify, and I think Mr. Urban validly has explained to you all that you can build in a floodplain. They do have DOW approval to do that. The next step would be to be able to get their construction plans approved. That's gonna require the county engineer's involvement on some of these issues, and it's gonna depend on whether or not this waiver gets approved, exactly how those things get submitted to the county engineer. But whether or not they construct in the floodplain is a totally separate question, and is not really the question that we're here about. So, I just wanted to try to clarify that before I got my engineers up here to start talking, and, because again, we may get back into some of that confusion, because they've got some of that stuff included in their PowerPoint. Okay? So, I'll stand aside and let them go ahead.
Let me, Mr. Baxter, let me, let's get them sworn in at one time.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Bonet?
Do you saw, Ms. sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
All right, whoever'd like to go first? We'll get, name and address, please.
Amy, how do I get this so it's full? I'm just... Is it just the PowerPoint? It's just PDF?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's just...
Okay. Both of you, name and address, please.
Spencer Heike with Heritage Engineering, 642 South Fifth Street, Louisville, Kentucky.
Okay.
Kevin Heike, I'm a project architect, and it's 9 River Bluff Road, Louisville, Kentucky, 40207.
Well, that's okay if you...
Didn't know that you were doing it all at one time?
Well, no, if you're gonna testify, I'll get that when you come up, so...
Thank you.
Okay?
And we thank the board for hearing us once again. Again, my name's Spencer Heike, I'm a landscape architect with Heritage Engineering. I've been practicing for two years now. And we just wanted to present, and we'll try and flush through this, but I believe there are two new eyes on this. Application denied, resulted in a tie, recession, and then, I believe, it was denied on a seven-to-four denial. And this is our site here, as you can see, the Ohio River to the west, just off Rose Island Road, and that is the 40-acre Wildlife Management Area, which was part of the Reserve Cove subdivision approval. This is the site as it is today. Our clients have put in erosion control measures, seeded and strawed the entire lot, organized the rock. I know some of the photos you saw earlier were during construction. Since we've been in this state of limbo, we have attempted to clean up the site in a presentable manner. Again, the view, more recent, the Ohio River to the rear, Wildlife Management Area, that more strawed areas, the raised lawn down to the south.
And one thing I'll point out is that the entire raised lawn is not in the 40-foot no-disturb zone, only a portion of it. Here's a view of that raised lawn with the Ohio River to your back when you're looking up towards the site. And so, as Spencer mentioned, the site's been cleaned up some, and it's not as invasive or intrusive. And the purpose of this area, I guess, as, we'll speak to it, it's to create a usable space for the homeowners. But we are, we will restore the area back to what we'll say it's like natural habitat.
Yeah, we have some slides that indicate that that area was a meadow area, and this raised lawn area will, at the end of the day, be a raised meadow at a four-foot higher elevation. Again, this is our neighborhood plat, and that yellow area is our only area of concern for this meeting. This is a survey that we had done of the property and showing contours. That yellow outlined area is the no-disturb area. The blue is the fill, and the orange dash line is the wall. And as you can see, you know, this is a particular site, in that there are drainage easements on either side, a sanitary sewer easement in the rear, the 40-foot no-disturb zone, and a floodplain. So, we had a lot of obstacles within the buildable and usable envelope.
And just one thing I'll point out with this slide is that this is a new survey. At our last presentation, we had a licensed land surveyor prepare a survey. His name was Wes Barber. There was some question about the location of the property boundaries, and since then, I know that we went back and hired Eric Sanders from ETS Surveying to do a new survey, and I believe the adjacent property homeowner hired Bob Zix to do a new survey. All three surveys came out to show that the information we presented the first time around, in terms of the property boundary locations, was accurate.
And again, this is the wall. I'm not sure how the building department would define a structure, but we did not use any mortar or permanent material. It's all dry-laid stacked natural boulders from a regional quarry.
It's permeable.
Permeable as well. And then, we get to the 40-foot no-disturb zone and how it came about. When the neighborhood was approved through an open records request, we found three mentions of the, how the 40-foot no-disturb zone was established. This mention, any thought of how the refuge area will be protected from the rear lots adjacent to the area, a buffer or no-disturb zone may be appropriate? So, the goal of that statement is to protect the Wildlife Management Area. We believe our wall is a form of buffer. It'll prevent people, domestic animals, from entering and agitating the wildlife. It's a hard buffer, and obviously, you can't get vehicles past a four-foot change in elevation, so construction is hindered to that area. Then it's mentioned the tree conservation area is in conjunction with the wildlife refuge, so the 40-foot buffer was meant to be a tree preservation area. If we go to the next slide, this was a concept drawn, submitted with the subdivision application that indicates, as you can see, that of all the lots, there's no trees indicated based on this map. And then, even though the requirement of a tree preservation plan has not yet been formally adopted, the applicant has provided a tree conservation area in this plan to prevent the residential lot owners from removing trees in the Wildlife Refuge area. So, that's to prevent people from going into the Wildlife Refuge area, agitating vegetation, wildlife, removing plant material. Again, we believe our wall meets that intent, and the fact that it hinders free access back and forth. And again, we're just speaking to the uniqueness of the site, you know, we gotta look at this as an individual basis. The red area indicated is a slope of over 35%. Lot 7, our site, does not have that slope. We'll show you in the next photo, that this is the ridge, that is in red, if you don't mind going back. As you can see, our major drop in elevation is to the front of the property. It's the only lot that has that uniqueness to it. So, as you can see, the ridge, properties have chosen to build their homes up on top of the ridge and put retaining walls, because honestly, with all intents and purposes, a 35% slope is a hindrance to itself to build. Construction costs go up, and it's not the best location. And this also shows that our drop in elevation is to the front of the property, creating available usable space sloping forward to the rear of the lot. And now, we're into the drainage easements. And this disturbance of the no-40-foot disturbed zone came about through managing water on the site outside of the 40-foot no-disturb zone. It was kind of an answer through, as you saw, the envelope we need to work in, and what the site presented to us. So, as you can see, we share a seven-and-a-half-foot easement with the neighbor to the north, and we are responsible for the varying larger drainage easement, which handles much more water than the easement shared to the north. When the road was cut, this was the grading plan that was submitted, so we can imagine that this was what the scenario was when the neighborhood was constructed. For, if you don't mind going back, as you can see, the red line indicates the direction of water. It's not perfect, it's not exactly within the easement, but it's ballpark within the easement. This is the scenario from logic, as it is before we got on-site for construction. Water had been diverted into the middle of the rear property outside of the no-disturb zone, and that water to the south, the easement that we have to manage on our own, is many, many, many acres of water that need to be considered. So, as you can see, the envelope from the rear of dry, natural space was, we probably lost 30% over time. And this is the survey showing the construction of the walls. You can see, it started to revert it back to its natural drainage pattern. So, this is phase one of a much larger plan, which we'll explain a little further along. But as you can see, it looks more like the original slide of when it was constructed.
This is a new survey that was done after the fill was brought to the site.
Yes. This is just indicating that construction and easements can occur. Let's flip through these. Keep going. Keep going. This is that easement that we need to manage on our own. That's about a three-foot pipe, and when it rains, it comes through. So, we're just, to note that we are taking responsibility and consideration for all issues. And this is our response to the drainage patterns that we just showed you, what they were, what they are today. We showed up on the site and had to manage the water. We, a team of landscape architects, architects and engineers have all been working on this. And this is what we'd like to see at the end of the day. We're gonna manage the drainage and the shared easement along our property line, take it to a pipe, and get it on out.
This, right here above the word lot number eight, this is a new revision to what we presented last time after we met with the county engineer. And instead of trying to pipe the water across the site and add it to an area that has potentially more water moving through it, the suggestion and the new sort of design is to take it straight and keep both drainage easement open and available to move water.
If you would, draw on the screen the exact area you're talking about.
Yes, that would be that easement. That's the shared easement that we saw directed towards the middle of the property, which we are...
But before it, we took it across the site in this direction, and now we're taking it straight out here. And then, here's another easement where we're taking water.
And that easement, we're, our design's full potential, will be cycling natural rain water through vegetation, removing solids, and nutrients, and improving water quality. This is a cross-section of that easement, and...
The lower right.
Lower right, okay. There we go. And this is just to show that this disturbance in no-40-foot disturbed zone is much of a much larger plan to manage and improve water on the site. This is our approval from the State of Kentucky Division of Water, still stands. This is our approval from the Neighborhood Association, which is still good. And this is our approval from the Oldham County Environmental Authority. He had no issue, and our clients understand that should a sewer be submitted, that, installed, that they'll be responsible for any extra work required. This is a letter from an engineer from our office. It is of my professional opinion that the amount of fill on this lot is inconsequential to the overall flood capacity of the Ohio River floodplain. And then, even after this board's determination, there are other reviews that we need, milestones that we need to hit, that we'll be checking other issues than just this 40-foot no-disturb zone. We'll need to get an encroachment permit. We have approvals for the sewer, sanitary sewer easement, but not the drainage easement, because we, with, working with Scott's office, the county engineer, we wanna hammer this situation down first before they have to review it multiple times, to save them time. As well as, since we're putting pipes and doing things in the easements, we'll have a maintenance agreement with the county office to maintain those structures. We'll also be working with the Planning and Development Office for the construction of the flood hazard area, as well as the building permit itself. That, after all that, we'll be able to get back on-site.
And the one thing I'll just point out, the homeowners asked me to kind of state is that the raised swimming pool images, the renderings that you saw prior, that part will be connected to the home, and that is in knowing in this 40-foot area. So, essentially, fill was brought to the site, some rock was brought to the site. The area was disturbed, and we've tried to engineer, to basically improve the site and do it in a way that's not gonna inhibit, or cause any damage to the adjacent property owners or to the wildlife reserve.
And this is just flood map indicating that properties along Reserve Cove have encroached. It's not uncommon to build in the floodplain. This is at the entrance of the neighborhood, so, but we share the same floodplain. This is our FEMA flood map. That red indicates our site. This will dictate the flood insurance rates through FEMA. This is enlargement. This red line there is a cross-section we'll be showing on the next slide. The Corps of Engineers takes cross-sections at certain mile markers, and that's how they indicate flood levels. This is that site. This is that cross-section. This is what it means. The flood, base pool elevation of the Ohio River floodpl, Ohio River is approximately 422 feet. It has the capacity for the 100-year floodplain to go up to the 453.22 elevation. That brown on my left, your left, is the fill indicated in the no-disturb zone. And if you can imagine, this section runs for a mile long, and it's a little deceiving as well, because it's from the Kentucky side to the Indiana is three-quarters of a mile, but the depth from the pool level to the top of the floodplain is only 30, 30 feet and a half feet. And then, Bob is available to speak to, if you'd like.
Hey, Bob? What'd you say? Bob Woosley, I'm a, with Heritage Engineering, 642 South Fourth Street, professional engineer since 1999, I believe, was my first licensure. We did look at the floodplain through there. It, as Spencer indicated, we use the hydraulic modeling data from the Corps of Engineers. The amount of fill placed in this particular spot is definitely insignificant. I kinda like to look at it as if, if you take your swimming pool, because of the size of that basin is so large with the Ohio River, if you were to drop a block into your swimming pool, a cinder block, you see no rise in the water. That's, that's what we're talking about in terms of the space taken up. So, in terms of any potential impacts to a rise in water elevation or flooding, there is absolutely none as a result of this particular fill being placed in the floodplain. I can answer more questions on that, if you have questions for me, or come back up. But we did take a look at it. It's insignificant.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have an opportunity for questions here in a little bit, but is that complete your part of the presentation?
I can talk about more, but that's really all I have at this point.
It's up to you and your attorney.
Did you want me to speak more about flooding?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Baxter?
I just have one thing. Can I get you, come back up here? So, there has been a question raised about the construction of the wall in the back of the property on the boundary. Is it located on the boundary line?
It is not, it's a foot off the boundary.
Foot off the boundary. What is the height of the wall?
Four foot or just under.
Four feet or just under. Okay. That's what I needed from you, because I think the question that Ms. Bonet has is whether or not you're allowed to do that. Our position would be that this is property zoned our... Our position would be that this is property zone R2, which makes it subject to additional sections, including Section 250-090 that deals with fences and walls and the setbacks associated with that. And there's an indication in Section 250-090 Sub B that a required rear yard set, or wall, may be occup, or, excuse me, a required rear yard may be occupied by a wall not to exceed seven feet. So, that is, if this was taller than seven feet, I think we would have an issue, but, but that, it was the, I think that was your concern and I'm trying to address that concern. That's an amendment to the ordinance that was done in 2016, so that was a reserved part of it. At this point, I think that concludes our presentation and obviously, at the appropriate point, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. All right, with that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here to speak in support of? Okay, seeing no one, we'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that has questions or opposing testimony to this application? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now open it up for commissioners, for questions to the applicant, and nobody opposed, so commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Finney.
I have a question for the applicant and I'm not sure which one needs to, I've got several questions, actually. Stated in the, at the previous meeting and, and, and in the closing statement of the previous meeting, they were asking for approval for this waiver because this was allowing them to reclaim some usable living space of this property. Today, we hear testimony that this is gonna be put back into a meadow, much like the meadow is, what is below it. So, what's the difference in the usable living space being a meadow as, as the natural grade was before, or as a meadow on elevated space? To me, you're, you're asking for usable living space and not, usable living space is really not an issue here. It's just what you want to look like. I don't see, I don't see whether you're changing, you're changing the, you're changing the subject.
Mr. Finney, be careful about testimony, I mean, just if you have a question or whatever.
That's my question. You appear to be changing the subject.
As you can see here, I do, we don't have it indicated, but we'll say, that's, my fingers are a little fat, that's the forty-foot no disturbs zone. So, there was water congregating before the forty-foot no disturbs zone. Congregating water, if it doesn't have anywhere to go, causes root rot, attracts habitat mosquitoes, and it will be meadow. There's talk of adding vegetation, possibility of trees and things. It just was a solution to respond to the outside issues of water drainage.
Does water stand there normally, or does it drain toward the river?
I can't speak for, contour plans prior would say it congregated in a place that it didn't before. It's supposed to make, ideally, in a perfect world, it, it is managed through those highlighted yellow areas, the drainage easements. It has been diverted to the rear middle of the property.
And to expand on that...
Come up a little bit closer, we'll get you on camera.
To expand on that, you know, when you're at the rear of the property, looking back at the house, the change in elevation was dramatic. I mean, it can, could've been up to sixteen or eighteen feet. And this sort of raised lawn softens that. And, and so, it's, it's a way to, you know, still have a natural-looking grass area and when you're looking at the back of the house, whether it's a retaining wall for a swimming pool or the house itself, you're not gonna see this giant home. It's, it's gonna take a four-foot edge off of what you might see.
And I think, I don't remember exactly what it was, but off the rear of the pool, which is beyond, outside of the no disturbs zone, without the stepped area, which was a multiple, meant multiple solutions, it turned a twenty-two-foot wall into a twelve-foot wall. Much more manageable, way more sightly to adjoining property owners.
Okay. Also, you mentioned that this was gonna have some benefit or in controlling wildlife movement. What wildlife are we speaking of?
Not wildlife movement. People have dogs. Dogs go agitate birds and geese.
Dogs aren't wildlife.
I don't, the domestic, I guess domestic animals.
There's animals in the wildlife preserve.
Could you get you to come back up, please?
The animals in the wildlife preserve, this, you know, by having that separation there, if the homeowners had a dog or, you know, if there are people out there walking around, it's gonna almost act as a potential boundary to keep people from intruding into that natural wildlife.
Bedding, deer that bed down in the wildlife area, nesting birds, it'll prevent people from going into. We're not keeping animals off our property. We're keeping people and domestic dogs from running out into the wildlife area.
But you're speaking specifically of people that would just be on your property?
Guests, toddlers, anybody, yeah.
No danger for a toddler falling off a four-foot wall on tall grass where he can't see him?
We have met the building code to accommodate that.
Okay, you, you put a, you put a letter up there of acceptance or, or something from OC about the, they had no problem with this wall being built. Could you book that letter back up on there, please?
Yes.
Highlight. All right, I just wanted to get a better look at their statement. Okay, no questions. Thank you.
Before I ask any other, I had, did have one question. You spoke of the, of the code about the four-foot wall or whatever. Is it not required anything over thirty inches to have a fence?
There is a rail of some kind requirement and we're looking into that.
Another...
Could you get you to come back up, please? The mic's there in the center, so.
You know, there's, there's ways that you can build up the land just beyond the, the drop-off to, to keep from having a rail, if there's room to do that.
By code?
Yes. And all that, we'll, that'll get fleshed out and developed more as we're turning in drawings as part of the building permit application.
All right, any, Mr. McWilliams?
Yeah. Talking about building up the area beyond the wall in the no disturbs zone? Would it be in the no disturb zone?
We don't have any plans to expand the, what's already been done in the no disturbs zone.
That would include building up the land?
We have no, no plans of building on the neighbor's property in the wetlands or beyond the forty-foot.
I, I could've misheard. Mr. Baxter's gonna fix me up.
We're talking about the same thing. And the, the picture that shows the lot itself and where the, the existing stone wall is...
The photo?
Yeah. So, Mr. McWilliams, so I understand your question. Are you, so, as the testimony has been, that at this point, the rock wall goes to within one foot of the property line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They are not talking about building into property that they don't own because they can't get into this area because that's part of the forty-acre wildlife reserve area?
Yes, sir. I, you know, I understand that and it was, it's probably me, but I, I thought that we, somebody'd ask a question about a fence or something and said, well, we could, beyond the height of the wall, we're needed because of a code or something and then I think that...
I think that was the chairman's question and I think that...
And then something was said about, well, we could build up the land on the other side of the wall and avoid having to deal with, that's what I heard. Did I not hear that right?
There's other raised lawns and other raised terraces. There's other raised lawns and other raised terraces. There's multiple areas on our site where we are gonna have a combination of natural stone, flat areas and railings around those areas. But I, I can, in general, you know, we'll get, we'll be familiar with the building code and we're gonna consider toddlers in the design. I have a five-year-old, a three-year-old and a ten-week-old. And I can tell you that there's not gonna be any drop-offs that exceed thirty inches without proper railings and all that code enforcement will be out when this is...
Okay, so the, some of the concerns, Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing from some of the commissioners. I'm, I'm hearing responses that this is gonna be taken care of down the road, but I'm assuming that down the road means either someone on staff in whatever position and/or the commission will hear that again.
Well, yeah, and when it comes to code issues, you know, they've got to meet whatever the building code is and so, you know, if they propose something and, or build something that's not the code, then, you know, that would have to be addressed or would be addressed. But I think they will catch that, you know, probably in the plan, at a planning stage or whatever, when they go to, you know, present those plans and, and to, you know, it's, it does have to meet the code, no question about that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a picture, as you put up earlier, that showed three tiers up to the, up to the structure, and I'm only hearing about one wall. Could you draw for me somewhere where these two walls and the three tiers will be, just by lines or something on any of these sketches here?
Somehow, we're in...
I saw a survey. Go down. Okay. Go to the survey. Go back to the survey. I'm sorry, I don't...
You had two of them, but probably would be instructive to Mr. Horton.
So, everything we've been speaking about today has essentially been right in here.
What, what's in yellow, Mr. Horton?
Right. And then, a second raised, a second sort of rock piece will be right there. And so, there's, there's up to four feet of fill, like the vertical, the change in elevation is essentially four feet for this area. And then, there's gonna be another natural stone wall with more fill brought in behind it to build up this area. And then, right here is the swimming pool and on the opposite side of that swimming pool, you can step down to sort of a raised terrace area. So, the combination of this being the, the wall that's currently in place and this is what was constructed in the forty-foot no disturb area, you know, further up the site, we could have a second wall with some additional fill brought in. And then, you know, to soften that swimming pool wall, we could have a third sort of platform raised terrace area where you could sit down. That, what you're looking at is a swimming pool with a sheet of water that spills over. So, you could sit there and be on a terrace, a sheet of water behind you and the Ohio River on the other side. But the goal of those three areas is to soften the view so that when you're standing at the rear of the property looking up, you're not standing at an eighteen or twenty-foot tall wall.
You said sort of a wall on the, on the upper one there. Is it a wall or a rock wall, or is it gonna look like a rock wall or just, just change in elevation on the, the one right next to the pool? Is there, will it be a delineation with rocks or something?
So, this is conceptual and this, you know, this could change, but this is maybe a sixty or seventy percent design idea. And to try to speak to your question, you know, there, the homeowners intend to build a second natural rock area with fill behind it to step up to something that might look like this, which is another raised area. Again, to soften the, so, so this area here would be more formal looking and it could be made of limestone.
Okay. Thank you. And another question, I don't know whether you all would like to answer, the engineers. Could this addition be built without the waiver you're requesting? Not whether they would do it or would like to do it, could it be built? I know anything can be built, but...
Modifications is...
Come back forward, please, sir.
The modifications we're proposing here, the use, I mean, this is, by the property owner's right, was usable space for them to own, manage, do as they see fit, which was being inundated with water on a constant basis to, currently. Previously, when it was approved, that wasn't the case, as we showed when the road was cut in. So, we're addressing getting that, when I say usable space, we're talking about this space out here, not usable space in the no disturbs zone. When there's constant water, you, it's not a usable lawn, especially the amount of water we're dealing with.
So, does that mean it couldn't be built or it could be built?
This plan, as it's presented, could not be built as that. We'd have to factor the outdoor areas, that's correct.
Okay, so this particular drawing that you're showing here could not be built, but something else could be built without the waiver?
I mean, yes, a home could be built there with that patio, but, you know, our clients are outdoor enthusiasts and purchased this property with the understanding of the envelope as presented on the plat, and that wasn't what we received when we got on-site to design what they intended.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bonnet, and then Mr. Douglas.
Okay, I have, I have several questions. So, the clients actually purchased the property or did the, whoever purchased the property, were they not aware that there was a forty-foot no disturb area? And if not, why?
The significant part here is answer the question. If you know the answer to the question.
I don't, I have them here and they can answer the question. I don't think they knew that there was, I mean, maybe they didn't look at the plat or...
So, then I'm assuming that whoever's in charge of the construction would then look at the plat, that they not then tell the client, you have this forty-foot no disturb area?
I think, and we can ask the...
Sir?
Sure, sure, we can ask the people who purchased the property, but, you know, just to respond to your answer, it's not uncommon for them to get on-site and do some prep work and to do things to make site improvements. And that's what they were doing, they were trying to do it.
In a no disturb area.
Before we, I need to get you both sworn in and then we'll get your name and address for the record.
My name is Robin Heike, Robin Heike.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do.
Okay, and just name and address, please.
Robin Heike, 3112 Graystone Manor Parkway, Louisville, 40241.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I guess we got enamored with the whole, the, it's a beautiful lot. It was a considerable investment. I wasn't familiar with no disturb and I didn't see it. It's, it's, now that I look back, it's a very small piece on that land. What we knew we were buying is, we are buying a lot that's elevated with a big drop-off. Everyone else is on a ridge. Everyone else has a gradual slope or down. So, being in the business that we're in, we wanted to make the most of that land. We were willing to redo and put a considerable investment in, in the, in the drainage ditch, which is unsightly right now, and a considerable investment in the home. We don't want a home that sits forty feet up in the air, so we were gradually stepping that down with, and, and if you look at the plans, they're, they're incredible plans and we don't mind making that investment. But to say to us now that this forty-foot disturbance that we're affecting our neighbors and everyone else, the expert opinion says differently. And so, I don't know that you're opening the floodgates for everyone in Odom County. We believe it's just our lot and, and we are trying to, to make a considerable investment like our neighbors have made, but we have a unique situation in that we sit in an elevated area and they all have the ridge, so they had no reason not to just build theirs against a retaining wall. We have to create our retaining walls. And it is a considerable investment. And, and in our mind, we don't believe that we're asking for anything out of the ordinary here, but we're just trying to make the most of this property and, and be a good Odom County resident. resident.
Ms. Bonnet? Are you, I'm sorry, you have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Gerald Heike, and that same address as she stated. I don't know, we just went there.
Okay, go ahead.
To answer your question, I was not aware of that 40-foot easement. But I will tell you, I built a small, a wall on my property. I was very sensitive to the environment. I didn't put in concrete footers, I put in gravel footers. The wall is not mortared, it's loose, dry-stacked, and lets water in and out. And, and I was basically taking the view of the Ohio River, you couldn't see it down there. If you step two and a half feet up, you can see the Ohio River, so I was...
Were you aware of the five-foot setback requirement?
What was that?
The five-foot setback requirement? There's not, I thought that was something asked earlier?
There is no requirement, no.
For a wall?
The attorney said that, stated correctly, that when we adopted new regulations in 2016, fences and ornamental walls aren't required to have a setback.
Okay. But there was a stop-work order, where, so they were required to get a permit to do that?
The stop-work order was placed because there's over, more than an acre of disturbance without a permit and adequate soil erosion control measures.
I'm trying to, very, it's very difficult not to testify.
And may I address that? We didn't disturb, the lot is an acre and a half, we just disturbed the back part of it. We didn't disturb more than an acre. And I also want to clarify, the house is not in the 100-year floodplain. It is six feet, the lowest level is six feet above it, part of the pool and the pool deck because of the way the floodplain, it's very unusual. I think some of the neighbors...
I don't think we're concerned about the house. Actually, that is not anything that we're looking at today, and honestly, that's not a concern of mine.
Okay.
My frustration is trying to figure out why it is necessary to have that retaining wall in the 40-foot plain. The drainage problems in the area of your yard, could you not put a wall directly on that 40-foot mark away from the rear property line to follow the rules that everyone else has followed? Many of those other homeowners, I doubt, are able to use that rear 40 feet because of their severe drop-off. So, why can you not do, just move it up to where you're allowed to do it?
Well...
The plan's beautiful. I get it, that's what you want.
Well, we...
But the regulations, that's what I'm trying to figure out, why can't you do that by modifying?
Because we have a unique, ours totally fell off, and we're trying to stair-step it down and utilize that land back there, that we paid a premium. If you look the prices of the lot, I don't want to be rude, but we paid a lot of money for that lot, more than quite a few of the neighbors. So, we were just trying to, to utilize our investment. And since the stop-work order, we've done nothing but comply with everything, so it's our fault that we got ahead of ourselves.
I only have one more question, and that probably, and involves a slide. You all showed a cross-section view of the rear yard. We did not have that in our packets that I'm aware of. Is there any way you can pull that back up, because you kind of just clicked through it pretty fast?
In their presentation, they were the drains.
Oh, that was a cross-section of the entire Ohio River.
Yeah.
There was a, I swear, it was a cross-section that showed the walls and...
Oh, that was a detail.
And it was about drainage, I believe. But it kind of flashed up there real quick, and we don't have that in our packet.
Was it...
It was a line drawing.
This one?
Nope. It was of the entire rear yard. It showed the different walls.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, okay. Yeah, right there.
Yeah. Okay, so, and because it's so tiny, on that bottom strip where it shows the entire rear yard, where is the 40-foot no disturb area on that drawing? Is that just that last?
It is somewhere down here. This would be the second wall behind. This wall is not the one that is currently constructed.
Okay.
And then, from here on is just natural dry creek bed. It's returning it back to the dry creek bed.
So, I guess my question didn't quite get answered, why can't you stop there?
With the slope, we anticipate we need that, and to get the water pulled back, we have to manage it at a certain, like, what's missing from this conceptual design is the grade changes. That's what we're working with. And to provide with the grade changes, that's what we're anticipating, is that we need that.
So, the grade changes at the bottom are not to scale?
No, they're just not shown. I mean, we've drawn along that, they're just not shown on this...
Not the full site.
That's not the full site, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This section doesn't cut through the entire site, it just cuts through the stream improvement. Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Bonnet? Okay, Mr. Douglas.
I have several questions. I guess I'll direct mine first to Mr. Woosley. You testified you studied the slot.
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by study?
In terms of the hydraulics, sorry, drainage, the, if I lose my voice, I'll come back. We looked at the cross-section from the Corps of Engineers on the Ohio River as it relates to the fill being proposed for this particular property, and what impact it would have to the flooding elevation level, and it has no impact.
So, what software did you use?
HECS. HECS, it's the same software package that the Corps of Engineers requires.
Okay. And did you bring any of those studies, or have you, or you're just coming here to testify based on your look at this?
Pardon, say that again.
Are you testifying that this is based on your study, or based on what you looked at?
Yes, I'm testifying based, we took a look at the study that the Corps already had, the model that the Corps already has set up, because they already have a model that you had put your data into. And as a result of our analysis, it has no impact.
And in this study that you did, did you do the study without the 40-foot disturbance?
No. Say, without the 40-foot...
Well, I mean, you're, you testified...
I did the study with that fill material being placed to see what...
The existing fill that's already been placed in the 40-foot disturbance?
Correct.
Did you do one without the fill being there? What it would done, or what it would look like?
That's the current situation, that's their current model.
Okay, well, that's, that's a current model that they implemented that caused it.
No.
But if they were coming to you to ask you to do a study to...
I would check...
See what the implication would be for the water runoff onto their lot or into the easements?
That's different than a flood analysis.
I didn't ask for a flood analysis yet.
What are you asking?
I'm asking you what study you did of not showing, or not showing what the implication would be if they did not do the 40-foot disturbance. In other words, did you give those clients the opportunity to say, if you're not granted this waiver, what other implications or what other avenues could they do?
No, what I looked at specifically was what impact would putting fill on the property have on the floodplain elevation specifically. And I, I thought that was what you were more concerned with, was what, I'm sorry, what implication that would have on flooding to the adjoining property owners. And it has absolutely zero implication.
Did you...
Now, I just jump in here. I think what you said is, the Army Corps has a base study.
Yes.
You then added to that base study...
Put the fill material in there, correct.
Forget that it's already there. You said, how much fill material goes into that base study? And, and by that analysis, your testimony is there's no impact.
Correct. That's correct.
That's really what you're questioning, and he's trying to answer.
I'm trying to answer, I wasn't...
Right. I'm just trying to get to the point where if they didn't have the disturbance in the 40-foot do not disturb zone. Because obviously, we're hearing testimony, we're hearing testimony from the applicant that states that this disturbance is based on trying to eliminate the water buildup at their property.
I believe it's the standing water.
The standing water issue. However, how do we know?
Yeah, the, and when I say we studied, I was, quite frankly, not concerned with the 40-foot disturbed area, but the overall impact in the floodplain, because the floodplain extends well beyond the 40 feet.
Right.
So, even without disturbance in the 40-foot zone, you still have fill in a floodplain occurring behind that. So, that's what I was looking for.
So, my point of my question to you was, is that if you had done the study also to show if that fill had no effect on the output or additional flow of water to any neighbors or to the wildlife zone, we don't know, because you didn't do the study to show...
No, what I would have looked at...
Wait till I finish, because I'm not sure if the client told you that this is in regards to aesthetically what they want, aesthetically, to go into the 40-foot zone, correct?
Mr. Douglas, I think you're getting a little bit out of bounds here.
No, I'm not, I'm asking him, did he, was he looking at this?
No, I was looking at flooding.
That's exactly right.
Particularly flooding. I can tell you that, looking at drainage patterns, I would have had concern over finding a way, as you saw on the map, the water had, had found a way to get to the middle of the lot and not to the easements that were dedicated. I would have found a way to get that water off the center of the lot, and via this filling in that area does that. So, that, that is the way to get the water around it and off of the center of the property.
As one way?
I'm sure you could come up with multiple ways, but that is a way to do it.
Okay, thank you. A nexus to the engineers, I guess. Oh, no, I'm sorry, to the architect. So, I think I heard you or somebody mention that the reason why they went into the 40-foot do not disturb was to tier it for water runoff.
Can I interrupt you just a second? Our time has expired from questions. What's the feeling of commission, another five minutes? Okay. Get a motion to do five minutes addition. Okay, second. All right, all those in favor of adding five minutes to our commissioners' questioning time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, continue, sir.
So, can you once again explain why, why the disturbance in the 40-foot?
Yes.
Is it for stormwater?
It is, yes.
Or is it for aesthetically to keep water from getting to the pool?
This all stems from stormwater. It has a positive, it's a multiple solution answer that, yes, adds aesthetic value. I think, as any designer in construction, you look for multiple solutions. They're cost-effective, and your clients leave more happy. And I think that we are benefiting Oldham County by cycling some of that water. Now, yes, I think maybe some of the confusion was, yes, there is a 100-year flood, there isn't a 100-year flood concern, but this raised lawn was response to the regular rain events that occur. Those drainage easements were designated so Oldham County could come in, clear out any issues, keep them clear. Well, at the end of the day, I believe with the engineer's office, when we submit our final plat, they need an easement of where the water goes. So, our clients are going to have to expand the easement to accommodate something that shouldn't necessarily be. Those easements are designated to handle that. But since the water, as you see, juts in like that, if we left that and then submitted, we would have to include that ditch in an easement, and they would have to take on that extra burden. So, as our solution, it managed that requirement, managed the everyday rains, and did not, does not have effect on the 100-year flood events.
Could you have done the same thing without going into the 40-foot easement? Because I heard that one of you stated that it goes to a slope to the top of the lot, not like a ridge line or a ridge where it's a drop-off.
Can I mention something real quick? Just, I'm not sure about the entire 40 feet, but you definitely would have gotten into the 40 feet to keep the water, can you point on this thing? Yeah. That's the coolest tool, I gotta get one of these. How did you draw on it?
You just touched...
Just drawn, I don't have one of these. This, so, this line here, to get that water off the center, had to move to this property line. So, you would have crossed through the 40-foot zone at some point to get the water from, crap, I don't know what it did, but to get the water from back here out to the wildlife refuge area and out to the river, or through, through the wildlife area. So, you had to have crossed the 40-foot at some point and get it off the middle of the property.
And again, as we showed earlier, this was, there were no specimen trees, it was meadow, and we're going to return it to meadow.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, we're down to about two minutes here. Any additional questions before we wrap up? Mr. Finney.
A few minutes ago, you testified that, that water stands there all the time on this, on this area below the house. Is that correct?
I don't mean, it congregates there, it, yeah, that there's a meeting point, and it eventually does flow on. But it pools because the slope is not as needed.
Okay, by pooling, you mean there's standing water there?
I can attest to that. The contours would indicate that there is two ravines meeting and a high point in front of them.
So, you've not been out to the lot to see what's water standing or not standing there this summer?
No, this summer, there's not, but the wall was in place by then.
Mr. Finney, I mean, obviously, we're here in a position where we're asking for forgiveness, not approval. And so, that, that makes that question difficult for him to answer, because the wall's already in place. He can't, there wouldn't be any ponding to see now, because they've already put the retaining wall in and the fill is there.
Okay, so, so there's no problems on the, on the lot from there back toward the house, or the proposed house?
There is, but that's because the plan hasn't been fully executed. We've got to get a pipe in on this other side and get that water on the north end, our left, back into his designated easement. But yeah, because the plan isn't 100% completed...
Project's not complete?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, commissioners, we're about run out of time again here, so unless there's just somebody that has a pressing question that haven't gotten answered, I think we will move on to final statement of the applicant. All right, Mr. Baxter, final statement, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try not to belabor this, because I think my client stood up and explained their concerns, their issues, and what they are seeking to do. There's no question, we are here begging for forgiveness. So, that, that's part of it, and they understand that that's where they are, they're asking for you all to exercise some discretion in granting them something that unfortunately they went ahead and did, and then figured out they had made a mistake, and that came to the attention through the stop-work order, and so they now are appearing, trying to get this approved. We've gotten kind of sideways here, and I know that there's a lot of, of information that it relates to, and I'm not going to necessarily be accurate, but, but I think right along here, this contour line is going to be pretty close to what might be considered the 100-year floodplain. With that being said, that is not our issue. Construction in the floodplain, as it relates to improvements on the lot, the pool, the house, they showed you some other retaining walls and things, those are not the things we are here about. We are here for the singular issue of the, that right in this area, this 40-foot waiver, and we've kind of gone back and forth about whether or not this is needed. And, and I think they finally crystallized for you, yes, there is an aesthetic value to them to be able to do this, but there is also a need because of the current drainage that is shown in this location. What they have testified to is that the proposal is going to call for having the drainage reworked along this line and along this line in order to get the property, get it out of the center of the property. And that, by necessity, is going to mean that we're going to be encroaching in that 40-foot no disturb zone if they are allowed to rework that drainage, which is part of the proposal that they are making. So, that gives you the necessity, the need for what they're doing. You all will remember... You all will remember that when we came in May, there was some opposition from a neighbor regarding this plan. And he raised concerns, and I think the concerns that he raised formed the basis of the motion to deny that was made on that date. The neighbor is here today and he did not stand up and voice those same concerns and has not expressed opposition to what has been proposed. I think that that should speak to you about the fact that his concerns, his issues have been addressed and his fears have been allayed by the information that was provided to you all relative to the impact of this fill being put in the floodzone and in the floodplain. My clients respectfully ask you to consider granting the waiver based upon the information that they have provided today. And that would conclude our presentation. Thank you all for your time.
All right, Mr. Baxter, thank you very much. So, this docket, PZ 18021, is now closed. And I'll ask, as always, Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline what's being requested here. Mr. Urban?
Yeah, again, the request is fairly simple. It is to waive the No Disturb area of 40 feet. There's a sample motion in your staff report, as always, on page two, either for approval or denial. If you were to choose to approve, there's only one condition that I've heard, and that is that the waiver only apply to the plan considered at the August 28, 2018 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing.
Mr. Carter, anything you need to add, sir?
No.
Okay. All right, commissioners, you've heard Mr. Urban outline what's being requested here. Chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ 18021, the request for a waiver of the 40-foot Do Not Disturb area. Ms. Bonet?
Concerning docket PZ 18-021, a move that we deny the waiver request due to the fact that strict compliance with the regulations will not create an undue hardship. They can construct their home, they can address the drainage on the bulk of their lot without this retaining wall and work within the No Disturb zone. Think it needs to be looked at. If it had not been done in advance, what would our decision be?
Okay, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Finney, seconds? Now, any discussion on the motion on docket PZ 18021 to deny? Any discussion?
Mr. Urban? As always, you have to understand what your answer is. If you support the motion, a yes answer is actually denial, it's kind of that reverse thing. If you do not support the motion, then you would vote no.
Correct.
Right? I mean, it's a motion to deny. Do you support that motion, yes or no?
Yes. All right, any further discussion on the motion to deny? Seeing none? Ms. Nunn, if you would, let's take the vote. And as Mr. Urban pointed out, the vote of yes is on the motion to deny. So, that means you're in favor of denying this request. So, Ms. Nunn?
Okay, Ms. Bonet? Yes. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Halfling?
No.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Finney? Ms. Davis?
No.
All right, the motion on docket PZ 18021, the motion to deny passes on a vote of seven to five. All right, commissioners, we've got just a couple of things to finish up here before we adjourn. Ms. Alvey?
Training, I sent out two emails regarding training opportunities. The first training opportunity is on September 17. This is for the Regional Mobility, whoops, Regional Mobility Council Annual Summit. It is going to be located at the Fraser History Museum. If you would like to attend, so far I have Mr. Douglas, Mr. McWilliams, and Mr. Neal. If anybody else would like to attend, please let me know as soon as possible, like, before you leave the meeting, because I need to go on and get everyone registered for that. The other one is presented also by Kipta. This is the David Pike Training. This will be held on October 2. It will be held at Kipta. You will get six hours of training hours for this. This seating is limited, this is first come, first served. We all enjoy David Pike's training opportunities. So, if you let me know as soon as possible on that one. So far, on the Kipta Training, I have Halfling, Douglas, Falvey, and Neal so far on that training. So, I will-
Alvey, do we know as far as our hours and wherever we stand on House Bill 55 Training?
Well, everyone, people are on different schedules. So, you have to have eight hours every two years. I have your training printout here with me. So, if anybody has any questions, I sent that sheet out when I sent out the Regional Mobility email as well. But if anyone has any questions, how many hours they need, or if you signed up for the Regional Mobility and don't want to go and want to go to this one instead, just let me know. I have to send that in very soon, so. And I'm not aware of anything at this point for Planning Commission next month. Our filing deadline is tomorrow. But I don't know of anything right now. Most likely, we will have one in October, because I do have an application most likely coming in for TRC. So, that'll go to TRC in September and Planning Commission in October.
Mr. Urban, anything you need to add?
I was just going to say that the Regional Mobility Conference is always interesting. You know, it's not, it's unusual for us because we're a rural community, but if you think about the growth of population in Oldham County, there's always some good information, at least to think about in terms of land use planning. And then, of course, the David Pike Training is really good.
All right, commissioners, thank you all. And we will stand adjourn and might not see you next month, but we'll let you know after tomorrow. Thank you.